Let me call the meeting door. After all this anticipation, now the meeting is called to order. Everybody please stand, we'll do the invocation. Dear Lord, I pray that you would be with us tonight. Help this mayor and help this council to take care of the business of the citizens of the city of Fort Oglethorpe. Give us the wisdom to do those things that we should do, and give us the strength to recognize those things that we shouldn't do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Be seated, please.
Next item on the agenda, the minutes of the council meeting of September the 14th. Have all the members of council have had an opportunity to review those? Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Rogers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All of us in favor say aye. Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, communications from the mayor. Mayor's gonna be kinda brief tonight. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody here. It's getting election time, so we're getting a few more people here. I wished we had as many people here as we had signs in the city, and we'd need a shoehorn to get everybody in, so it's... We were going... And it's on the agenda tonight under new business. The intersection of Battlefield Parkway and Lafayette Road, to name that after Reuben Satterfield. He's one of the former chiefs of police of the city of Fort Oglethorpe. Goes back in history a long time, and I don't know if most people here remember Reuben. When I was in school, I worked as a dispatcher in the police department, and Reuben was there. He's probably... The average life expectancy of a police chief on his job is 18 or 19 months. In the state of Georgia, Reuben stayed there for years and years. Back during that period of time, the city of Fort Oglethorpe had one police car. And each sheriff would come in and park it, and the next officer would get it. Reuben even went out and read the water meters. Of course, probably didn't have more than 25 or 30, but the city was chartered in 1949, and we progressed to 9,200 people. We're a progressive little city. We cannot name that interchange. It must go through the state legislature, because Battlefield Parkway is a state highway. So we will address that later on in the meeting, but this mayor did not realize that, and I was made aware by the city manager this afternoon, and then I should've realized it, because we named the interchange of Deeks Road and Battlefield Parkway, and the state had to do that one. So this mayor dropped the ball. So we will hopefully get the state involved in this and get this taken care of at a later date. The homecoming parade, and I missed that. I'm sorry, but I was unaware that they were having a homecoming parade Friday, or Thursday, whatever night it was, but I missed it, and sorry about that, but I did. So I went to Lightview High School. All my kids went to LFO. Son played football and tennis up there. Two dollars were cheerleaders up there. So we have a lot of history at LFO. It's a beautiful school, and I just wish he could win more football games, but maybe that'll come as time passes by. Next item on the agenda, zoning matters. We have none. Next item on the agenda, second reading, ordinance 2015, fiscal year budget. Mr. Gouillard.
Let me... It's not been corrected in your agenda. This will be the first reading. Actually, it'll be the first reading on the proposed 2016 budget also. When I advertised it, I miscalculated, so we will have four readings instead of three. So we'll consider this the first. The next meeting, October the 12th, will be the public hearing and the second reading, and then the proposed final reading is October the 28th. This is ordinance number 2015-10, an ordinance to amend the 2015 fiscal year budget, ordinance number 2014-12 for the city of Fort Oglethorpe. The proposed budget amendment reflects an increase in income in the amount of $560,267.61. Likewise, on the expense side, would be amended to include expenses of $560,267.61. The water sewer would be amended to reflect an increase in income in the amount of $59,985.65. The expense side for water and sewer would be an increase of $59,985.65. The CDBG fund, which is the sewer project, would reflect an increase of $35,603. The expense side for administration and engineering would be $35,603.
Next item, first reading, ordinance number 2015-11. Mr. Gouillard.
This is ordinance number 2015-11. It's an ordinance to approve the 2016 fiscal year budget for the city of Fort Oglethorpe. The proposed budget would reflect income, projected income, in the amount of $14,240,324. That also includes water and sewer, with the expenditures being posed of $14,240,324. Like I said, that's the first reading. The public hearing will be the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gouillard. Next item, 2015-12, annexation. Mr. Gouillard.
Ordinance number 2015-12, annexation, be it ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, and it is hereby ordained by the authority thereof, that following property owned by Michael G. and Melvina Shaw, known as 899 Kenzie Street, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, is hereby annexed into the city of Fort Oglethorpe. That's first reading.
Next item on the agenda, first reading, ordinance 2015-13. Mr. Gouillard.
Ordinance number 2015-13, rezoning, be it ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, and it is hereby ordained by the authority thereof, that following property owned by Steve Dilbeck, known as 2958 Lafayette Road, Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, 30742, is hereby rezoned to a C1 special exception.
Thank you, Mr. Gouillard. Next item on the agenda, resolutions. We have none. Next item on the agenda, unfinished business. We have none. Next item on the agenda, reading of the city clerk of any communications. We have none. Next item on the agenda, new business, proposed approval of the tax agreement with Katusa County Tax Commissioner. Mr. Gouillard.
As you know, we have an intergovernmental agreement with Katusa County Tax Commissioner Sandra Self to collect our city taxes, and we pay an annual fee in the amount of $9,917.50, of which $5,950.50 is due the county, and $3,967 is due the tax commissioner. Recommend that you approve that amount.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Rogers. Mr. Crawford?
Second.
Second by Ms. Stenit. Any further discussion? Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Ms. Stenit?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, proposed approval of sale of surplus property and confiscated surplus property. Mr. Parker, is he here?
I'll handle this, Mr. Mayor. This is confiscated, or number one, is confiscated property. These are firearms that were confiscated by the Fort Oglethorpe Police Department. There's a total of 67 firearms. We're asking approval to put these weapons on the gov deals to be auctioned off. The only persons or corporations or companies that can bid on the firearms would be verified federally licensed firearm dealers. Asking approval for that, and also to surplus the old ball field lights that when we took those old ones down, we have those left, and would ask approval to auction those off too.
Is there a motion to approve this sale?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rogers. Any further discussion? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Stenit?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, proposed approvals to name the intersection on Battlefield Parkway and Lafayette Road after Reuben Satterfield, the former chief of police. That's the one that the mayor talked about. He dropped the ball on. Is there a motion to... Mayor entertained a motion to get with the state and ask their approval to do this.
I'll make a motion to that, 'cause I don't know... Well, I'll say something.
Have a motion to do this by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crawford. Any further discussion?
Yeah, like you said a while ago, there's some of y'all here I know that knew Reuben, and I remember him back when I was a kid, and he was one of the influences. Him and Smokey and Frank. These were people that we shared from the beginning, and they built this old building over here, the fire department, and of course, back then, it's Intermingle Fire and Police. We gotta be thankful for those kind of people that built our city. A lot of the people here that maybe are new or whatever, may not remember all that, but if it hadn't been for people like Reuben and Junior Lehman and the Nortons and several of these people that just... I mean, they had many of them. The town was just starting the core we're at now, thanks to them. That's all I gotta say.
Any further discussion?
Okay, let me clarify, sir. This is the motion to investigate approval from the state. How to make that happen?
Well, I think the motion is to get with the state of Georgia and ask that they get in the process of making this happen. They will have to... It will have to go through the state legislature, so it's gonna take... It will take a while to get it done, so...
Ron, can you clarify how that works?
It has to... There would have to be a special act from the legislature, and I think that... I don't know that we have any authority or jurisdiction over that whatsoever, because I mean, there's been a lot of names submitted, you know, and it's been typically our response is that that's something that needs to be taken up with the general assembly to notify your local legislation, ask them to look into it, and allow them to take whatever action they need to take to do it.
That's the way I understand it, too.
We did that on the interchange of Deeks Road with Mr. Franklin, who lost his life in Vietnam.
No, sir, that was done...
The state did that.
The state did that on their own volition. We didn't have anything to do with it. Senator Mullis was responsible for that.
Okay.
Should this be changed into request Senator Mullis look at it and...
I would say the local, your general assembly, your local representatives to look into it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, so I guess to clarify, we would be voting to request Senator Mullis to look into it.
That's the way I understand it.
Correct.
Okay.
Everybody clear on that?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah.
Ms. Stenit?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, city manager's report. Mr. Gouillard.
The only thing I have to report tonight is that we have initiated an ad in the Katusa County News requesting that potential contractors bid on some paving projects that we have Those that we would like to do first would be there where the construction has been, on Cross Street, where the water lines, Lake Shore Drive, and I believe it's Honeysuckle that runs off of Beaver. Those are the three priorities. There are others, but we're requesting that we get some feedback from the local contractors. That's the only thing I have to report at this point in time.
The members of council have any questions? And Mr. Gouillard? Next item on the agenda, city council comments. Ms. Stenit?
Yes, sir. October the 10th, Saturday, to raise money for Stocking Full of Love program. This event will take place on the Polo Field from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. There'll be a yard sale at 8:00 a.m. with arts and craft show at 10:00, and then the entertainment headliner, James Rogers, will perform for free at 3:00 p.m. Katusa and Walker County Sheriff's Department depend on these fundraisers for children to have Christmas. Saturday, October 24th, remembering our heroes also on the Polo Field, begins at 11:00 and will honor World War II veterans. There will be two battle reenactments, opportunities to visit living historians in their camps, so it's an educational opportunity for free for families. Saturday, November 7th, at 1:00 p.m., at the Katusa and Walker Patriotic Citizen and Veteran of the Year ceremonies, at the Katusa Citizen and Veterans Memorials. It will begin at 1:00 p.m. Veterans will eat free, and we will find out who our Katusa and Walker County Patriotic Citizen and Veterans of the Years will be this year. Saturday, November 14th, the Chickamauga Battlefield Marathon and Fort Oglethorpe 5K will be happening in our community, and last year's event brought over 1,000 people to our city. There'll be craft vendors to visit while the runners are still on their course. This year's proceeds from the 5K go to fund our own Six Calvary Museum. Any events that occur on the Polo Field, you may call Chris McKeever at the Six Calvary Museum if you need more information, 706-861-2860. And why are these free family events so important to our city? Because they bring thousands of people, not only from our city, but surrounding states, who spend their money in our retail and in our recreation areas and in our restaurants. So it's important that we work together as our Fort Oglethorpe family and promote the beautiful place in which we live. Gentlemen, that concludes Mayor Pro Tim moments.
Mr. Crawford, you'll be next.
All I got is I just asked everybody for thoughts and prayers for my family. My uncle Charles loves... He's having a rough go at it right now with his battle with ALS, and he's in Park Ridge intensive care right now, so just keep our family in your thoughts and prayers.
He's a good man.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
I don't have anything, Mayor.
You don't have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Mr. Smith? Did you say nothing? Next item on the agenda, citizens petitions and requests. Mr. Larry Reed, and I have not seen you since last election.
Oh, I've been here, that's the last meeting.
Okay, well, I'm gonna recognize you.
I was at the last meeting, so... You want me to come out?
Yeah, come up.
Oh, okay. That's the last meeting.
Somebody told me, have you sold your property down on Lake Shore Drive?
Rumors are, but I bought... I bid by page one.
Mayor, he's bid.
Oh, okay, somebody else got it.
Yeah.
Well, welcome back to the council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, you skipped a couple of citizens.
You've got two ahead.
You skipped a couple of citizens.
I'm going from the bottom to the top instead of from the top to the bottom.
That's not the way.
So you got the podium. I think the mayor does have this authority to do so. Am I correct?
Not on the agenda.
We've done it in the past to make sure that we're not... We've gone from bottom to top and top to bottom. So if you tell me that's not proper...
Yes, sir, it's not proper.
That's not proper. You need to sit down.
Please see, Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Jerry Deppkin, you'll be the first.
I take you my call, because I'm not hearing anybody, but you know, that cold, wet throat. They're doing it in South Carolina.
Would you give this to Ms. Deppkin, please?
My name is Jerry Deppkin. I live at 49 Eaton Circle.
Ms. Deppkin, that is a copy of the letter that you had asked me about.
Okay.
And I had never received a formal request for that. I told you that if you'd run by my house, I'd run you a copy of it, but we're here tonight, and I want to make sure you got a copy of it, so you got it.
Thank you. I've been out of town, so I didn't run by your house. The last council meeting... I'm the one who calls in about punctuation. I'm the one who calls in about using pronouns in law, and I'm the one that gets kinda crazy when people... Things are not... I don't think are done quite correctly. So I am reacting as a private citizen only at the last council meeting, and thank you for the opportunity to make this point. I had been out of circulation, had a death in the family. For about six weeks, six, eight weeks, I only had a house in Fort O. I was never here. So at the last meeting, when the mayor made a comment that this was not a political platform, these council meetings, that they are here for city business only, I thought, maybe I missed something while I was gone. It happens. So I sat quietly and watched it all go. And Chris McKeever from the Six Calvary Museum came up. She was on the agenda, and she gave a summary of what has been happening over the last few months at Polo Field, on most of the activities being sponsored by the Six Cav or with the volunteers from the Six Cav, some help from the Tourism Association, which I thought was a great summary. I think that every unit, every agency, every commission ought to do a regular, timely report to the city council, you know what's going on. So when she got all done with it, I thought, well, right? A lot of free stuff, a lot of things for families. This is really terrific. I was a little disappointed, this is me personally, that the mayor or no one on the council said, hey, good job, Six Cav, thanks for doing all those things. But that didn't get said. So Chris sat down, and then the mayor got on to explain... And then the last thing Chris did was she wanted to clarify the procedure for Labor Day at the post, that the procedure was, because it's election year and we're a nonprofit, that there would be no politicking. Now, if y'all here are old enough, you remember from the 60s when Carl Sanders was running for governor, and he came, and he was on... He stumped on a... Physically stood up on a lot of stuff and did his old stumpin' like we did back in the 20s. But that's not the way it's done anymore. Federal law has changed. And so the ruling was, no politicians running for office would have access on the bandstand, because that kinda puts you in the center, and that's what we were here for. We were here to celebrate Labor Day at the post and the tradition from the fire department for having done this for all those years after the war. So then the mayor... If I'm wrong on this, somebody can correct me, but then the mayor got his concern that what had happened, and then we evolved into an unsigned letter, an anonymous letter. And I'm thinking, you know, I don't... You hear me. If it's not written... If you think it's an ordinance, then show it to me. But if it's not written down and signed and approved by the city council, it doesn't exist. It's in your thought, but it's not a city ordinance unless you can show it to me legally. And so the unsigned letter, I got upset about. You can't send an unsigned letter to... Well, you can send it to the newspaper, but they won't print it, because you have to have a name on it. I need to be able to push against whoever wrote that letter to question them or get more information or argue my point. So I didn't like that it was read, and... But as I'm driving back from South Carolina this morning, I'm thinking, you know, all through history, oh, American Revolution, a lot of people wrote those kind of letters. Fabius was one. They all had these kinda crazy Latin names that they wrote, but they wrote a lot of letters, and everybody kinda knew who it was or they had a purpose. But this was not today, or last meeting. So I wanted to come up... I had some concerns, and I've talked freely to a lot of people about it, of, you know, do we have a policy of reading unsigned letters? If we don't, should we? The letter came on the heels of the mayor telling his version of why he couldn't speak. So now we got back into politics again, and I'm thinking, wait a minute, he just said at the beginning of the meeting, this is not a political platform.
He's all right.
Okay, so...
No.
Nothing?
Sorry.
Do I need to send you my request, then? Is that what I need to do?
Ms. Stenit, I'm gonna allow you... Or Ms. Stenit, I'm sorry.
All I wanna know is I would like the city council...
Go ahead, I'll give you another minute or two to finish up.
I would like the city council, with the assistance of the city attorney, to look in to what the... Is there a policy existing? If not, should we have one about reading anonymous, unsigned letters that are now part of the public record and then not seeing a copy of what it actually was? So I'm asking if you all would consider doing that. I don't have the authority to make you do it, but I would like that to be... Because I think this'll happen again, and I think there should be a policy. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney.
Ms. Deppkin, Ms. Deppkin, begging your pardon, madam. May I see the copy provided to you? Respectfully, sir, this is not the letter you read from. I looked at that letter. This is not the envelope, and this is not the letter.
Respectfully, are you telling me I'm sitting here telling an untrue?
I'm sure there is a reason for this being presented like that.
What's the post date on that, Ms. Stenit?
Post date on this is September 9th. Sir, the letter that you presented that evening, the address was in script. This is printed. Sir, the letter that you presented that evening was in regular type. This is huge font. This is not that letter, sir.
That is the letter, so, boys and girls and ladies and gentlemen, I respectfully ask that this letter is the letter that I received in the mail. That letter is the letter that I read to this council. So I don't know how you justify saying that it is not. You were standing on the podium, and let's get back to where we were.
No, sir. I was sitting here looking at the letter and the envelope while you were reading it that night.
Well, I'm telling you, that is it. So I mean, it's either you're mistaken or I'm lying, and I'm certainly not lying, so I can just assure you that. I mean, I'm a big boy, and I don't need to come up here and tell an untrue. And I mean, the mayor does not have to come up here and tell an untrue. I promise you, I'm a big boy, and I can stand the heat, but that is the letter that I read, and that is a copy that I ran off my copy machine to make sure... And by the way, Mr. Crawford, you'd requested a copy of it also, according to Mr. Gouillard, so there's your copy also. That is the letter. And that is the letter. I mean, it just, that is it. So is the wording different on this letter than, than what? I mean, that's the envelope, it's dated. What date did you say the postmark was?
It is the 9th of September in Chattanooga.
Okay, so I think that's what was stated and that is the letter I read.
Are you saying that that's the envelope here, sir?
No, that's not, that's not. This is a letter from Ms. Satterfield, Eleanor Satterfield. The original is home in my file, which will remain there.
If you insist, gentlemen.
Do what?
If you insist, sir.
I'm not insisting, I'm just telling you the fact. I mean, that's, that's just, that's just the way it is. Believe it or not, believe it, I mean, I have no reason to tell an untrue. And that's just the way it is.
Mr. Mayor?
I just wanted to, because you refused Ms. Depkin a copy of it. So I was just gonna let her say it, you know?
Well, actually, what I did is I told her that day, standing in, in the clerk's office. She hit me, just blindsided me and I, I spontaneously answered, no. And then within 30 seconds, I said, Ms. Depkin, I don't mind you having a copy of that letter and I think you were in the room, were you not?
No, was not.
Well, Ms., Ms. Murray was there, there's a couple of people there. I thought it was you, but sometimes when I think, I get in trouble. But I told Ms. Depkin and I told Mr. Goulart that you were welcome to run by my house and I'd be glad to run you a copy of the letter. And nobody's yet to come by my house. That's why I brought you a copy of the letter, Mr. Crawford. That's why I brought this letter here, so Ms. Depkin could get a copy of that. So, and I appreciate you coming to the council meeting and sharing that. The day at the Polo Field, the mayor traditionally, it's the responsibility of this mayor and every mayor before this mayor, to welcome the citizens that come into this city to visit, to spend their money and enjoy and give their time. Just because there's an election doesn't mean that the governor or any other elected official in this state or other states says, timeout, I'm, I'm laid off until after the election, I can't speak. This mayor will continue to welcome the citizens of the city of Fort Ogethorpe. You were standing on the podium, the podium when that happened.
Yes, sir, I was and I ask you not to speak due to the regulations.
You were correct. You, you apologized to me and you apologized to my wife.
I did and I said, I'm sorry, sir.
You said, I cannot believe that happened.
No politicians have been allowed on this bandstand.
You were allowed, you were the emcee.
I am not running for office at this time.
Just because there's an election going up does not mean that this mayor can't welcome the citizens of the city of Fort, into the city of Fort Ogethorpe. And I will continue to welcome the citizens that come into this city until I'm no longer the mayor and then somebody else can take that role. I mean, I'm not gonna turn that over to, to a council member just because there's an election going up. And I, I think, I don't think that's what the city charter wants. I don't think that's the role of the mayor. So anyway, let's move on. You're, you've already spoke, so you're-
No, but you spoke-
No, you're done.
-correctly about what I did.
You're, you're, you're done.
I don't get, I don't get a, I don't get a-
I'd like to entertain a motion to let Ms. Depkin continue on.
Well, this mayor's not gonna, it, once she spoke, she can't come back to the podium. That's, that is the room.
Is it?
That is the room. We will go by that room.
Is that the room?
Well, then, by all means, have them escort me out. Linda, standing next to you with that election shirt on, keep Mayor Lynn Long, reelect whatever her shirt says. That truly was a political statement. Thank you. I believe. She stood on the bandstand with you, with your elect Mary Lynn Long shirt on. Thank you. Did you get this from the tape?
We can tell it's election time.
Does he get to say something, but then?
Sunny Winston, you, you're a mix.
Well, hold on, just a minute. Okay. We have, you have five minutes. Actually, the extension of time should have been voted on, but wasn't. The mayor just granted it. And so I'm sorry, that's all the time we've got. Yes, ma'am, he, because of his political office, he does get to talk, just like any of the councilmen.
So he gets to say what I said was not true and that I don't get on the spot to be able to explain. So I need to come to the next council meeting, be on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
This used to be a night for everybody calling Lisa their liars. And I've been, and I've been called a liar, but I have proof tonight that I, I did not lie. About a year, can you hear me? About a year ago, I came to the council with a problem I had with a sewer. And after I made my statement, I think it was the next council meeting, a citizen got up and said that I had absolutely no proof that my statement was damaging. I had the proof, but I didn't reveal it right then. And the suggestion was made that I go to a city manager. Well, I had illness in my family that took priority over this. But I did meet with Mr. Goulart and I played the evidence that I had. And I had the, the law here. Mr. Goulart didn't have one, but I brought him one tonight. And it plainly states what I said is a Georgia law. And if anybody else wants one, I'll give it to them. But another thing, what happened is wrong and it needs to be corrected in this city. And what I wanna know is, since I've talked to the city manager, what he intends to do about it. Because the Georgia law has been violated here.
Anything further?
No, I'm waiting on an answer.
I'm not gonna respond to that. I'm gonna let you make a statement and then I will let you sit down.
Well, my statement is, I'm gonna fall up on it and if it's not corrected, I'm going further. Because it affected me, it affected my income. It affected me in a lot of ways. But I do know that I got up here and I told the truth, right? Didn't I tell the truth, Mr. Goulart?
Miss Winston, I'm not gonna sit here and allow you to depose me and, and make these self-serving declarations. I informed you what you should do. And that's all I can do. I can't give you any legal advice, okay?
I don't want your legal advice.
Okay, well, I'm not sure what you're asking me about.
But you told me that day you were gonna check into it.
I did and it has nothing to do with anybody in this city. It has something to do with a company out of town. I'm not gonna mention that now.
It does have something to do, it does have something to do-
And I'm not gonna mention any names, but I told you I would check and I do-
Well, that's what I wanted to know, what if you checked, found out?
If you wanna check with me, call my office. But I'm not gonna do this in a public hearing without giving them an opportunity, notice and an opportunity to be heard.
I'll just go further because I see right now that you're not gonna do anything, Mr. Goulart. Your hands are tied. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winston. Mr. Reed, you are now.
You sure?
Okay. Good to see you again, Mr. Reed.
Larry Reed, and I still do on Phase Two of the apartment, so I don't know where that information, but there's rumors circulating all the time.
Well, I get, I hear them all the time, belt moves.
Well, I had lunch with my manager the other day and they said the word in the community was that we're gonna merge with Phase One. That's not happening, so, okay? All right. I had talked to Mr. Goulart and he touched on one of the things I was concerned about. I've got on here streets and sewers. He mentioned that, I think it's what, it's Cross Street? Once the sewer line has been placed and then the paving over there, then Lake Shore Drive is next on the list. And that is definitely one that is dear to my heart. That, that street's got potholes and Jeff can't keep them filled up fast enough. So I'd be glad to see that happen. So, of course, going back, the guy that was gonna develop the apartment complex is gonna repave the street and widen it, but he lost that. Banks foreclosed, so that's not gonna happen. So you're, my paving the streets now the city's responsibility, so. But not to get crossways with Ms. Winston, I'm not one of her favorite people already, but at the last meeting, she was concerned about being sited for grass in the street and she was upset about that. Well, she's got somebody mowing her yard. I've got contract on my apartment properties. I've got a contract on my home. I gave up mowing my own yard about two years ago. But the contract provides mowing, edging and blowing off. And when they leave, you can't tell they've been there except for the fact that the grass has been cut. They do a fantastic job and I don't know who she's got doing it, but that needs to be a total job that they do, not just the mowing, so. But the weeds in this, left in this curb leads to eventual storm sewer clogging and that creates another problem for the city, to keep the storm sewers cleared out, so. But that's an important thing. The appearance is important for the city and the functional aspect, keeping the sewers, streets clean so the sewers don't clog up. So I support the city's position on that and I think that needs to be continued. So on a separate note, Jeff's not here, I was gonna bring his attention. The building at the end, end of the building out here, needs a little pressure washing on it. It's green from algae behind that elm tree or whatever it is out there. Get him to take a look at that. All right, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Stolz, do we have anything for executive session?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Michael. Second.
All those in favor, say aye. This meeting is adjourned.